I want to once again read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Thursday, January 14th, 2021, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Acreboro Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Acreboro Township Clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this hybrid meeting were posted on our website and on social media on Friday, April 16th, 2021.
Thank you. May we have roll call.
Ms. Alomarda?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd is here. Okay, there she is. Mr. Delavarka?
In person, here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Salagi?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano.
Here. Okay, thank you all very much. Now let's please stand and salute the floor. So again, welcome everyone and thank you for coming out to our April work meeting. It's been a little while since we've been together because of the timing of not only our budget submission, but then spring break. So we've been apart for a few weeks, but now we're back in April and we have a very busy April. We have two very, very important things that we're going to embark on, which will be the subject of our upcoming superintendent's report. The first is our budget. Our budget hearing will be a week from this evening and we will be approving the budget. Thanks to the additional state aid that we fought for and received, we'll be doing some very important things for our district right now. We'll be making sure we have no learning loss or mitigated to the greatest extent possible due to the pandemic. We'll be providing one-to-one technology, which means a computer for each student in the district. That's a first. And equally as important, beginning to look at the needs of our infrastructure. First and foremost, most HVAC, heating, ventilation and air conditioning systems all throughout the district. That second, that second letter in there, V, ventilation, is critically important during these times to have systems that are reliable, that work, that ventilate our buildings so that we have safe buildings, safe, healthy buildings. And also, this budget will see no tax increase. We will be at zero. The school tax will remain flat. In addition, the second very important thing we're going to embark on, we will be returning finally to five days of in-person instruction. That begins next Monday, April 26th. So April is a busy month for this board and this district. We have a lot of work to do. We have to work together. So with that, welcome again. Welcome back, everyone. This is also the first meeting. We're all back together in person in quite some time. It's a wonderful thing. And with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Gruccio.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Spring. We are getting ready to take a turn to the finish line with just about nine weeks left of our school year. I have a few updates this evening. One is, as Mr. Castellano spoke, we are ready to return to five days of school on April 26th. The elementary level grades K through five will follow their normal full-day schedule and the secondary level six through 12, as well as our PK, our preschool, will continue to follow the abbreviated schedule for in-person instruction. Please note why we use the term abbreviated. Students are in-person abbreviated, but they are on a virtual schedule for the afternoons as well. Please see the websites, specific school websites for specifics regarding times for entry and dismissal. Students and teachers will complete the full day virtually. I want to emphasize that. What goes on virtually and in our afternoon sessions, our small group instruction, where we have found through our data collection that we are greatly meeting the needs of our advanced placement students, 504 students, students who have to complete credit completion, students that have been through the INRS process, students that have IEPs, RTI process and our ELL student. So we have done a lot of one-on-one work with them, group work with them, and the progress has been very impressive. So this is feedback that we received from our secondary teachers as well as our parents. We will continue our food distribution process. That includes prepping over and serving over 15,000 meals weekly. We use our Mondays for that and that is for all students in Acreboro Township. At this time, the use of Alder and the high school cafeterias for food prep is being utilized combined with the need. For six feet of social distance during our lunches has made it very difficult for us to safely hold a lunch period for students to eat at the secondary level. So as to not hold up the elementaries in their progress of going five full days, we decided that until we find a solution for our secondary schools, district grade levels are a little different. And I think that, I know that has been communicated to parents and I believe understood by parents and students and teachers at this time. But we, just so you know, we have explored renting tents, renting heaters, renting different servers, but at this time, the logistics become very complicated. And when it comes to that, as well as for supervision and security. So we are exploring options. We will continue to do that and continue to keep you updated as we proceed. The current data for in-person versus virtual students is as follows. Right now, the feedback and response that we have, 66.6% of our students will be returning in person and 33.4% will be virtual. I did some comparative data and it shows me that on average, 30 more kids will be returning per school. That's on average. So when I break it down, it looks like 12 to 25 more students will come back to in-person at the elementary level. I held Miller out specifically, the in-between grade levels. There's 43 students more at Miller. And then moving up to the secondary, there's 42 to 83 more students at the secondary level, with 83 more students coming to the high school, coming back to the high school in Carson. And that gives them just 50 students over having half of their enrollment back. So if you follow me, just over half of the enrollment of the high school is back. So overall, what I see is that our secondary level has less in-person students than our elementary school level. Out of our 7,190 kids, 4,815 students are returning to in-person students. And that's how we're going to roll until the end of the year. I thank everybody for their understanding and participation in the process that we have put forth regarding our road forward. On a good note, a great opening day for our athletic teams as they just entered season four of our athletics, which is something even different to everyone because we usually have run three athletic seasons. This year we had four. And we had, you know, wins in softball, baseball, lacrosse, boys volleyball. I just want to point out it was their first, first game ever since you all approved the boys volleyball program. So that was an additional athletic program. Our fine and performing arts came off a great present, performance for La Misérable and our indoor drum line is actively participating and competing now. And I share this because this is all new to us because at this time of the year, these things don't happen, but they're happening now because of the COVID situation and all the hard work that everyone has done in order to get, give kids a sense of normalcy. So thank goodness they're able to do the things that they love and share their passions and talents. A little bit off with the timing, but we're so fortunate that it's happened. Okay, that's my report and update. I know we do have some presentations and I'm going to turn that over to my assistants and we're going to share with you information on student performance.
Good evening. So myself and Ms. Moss are going to talk about the 2019-2020 school performance reports. And we're going to go through this information, give you a little bit of background, get into what you are used to seeing and talk a little bit about that, and talk also about the changes because we also know, of course, that we are still living in this pandemic. And because of that, what we once knew as normal performance reports and things we would report out in regards to student data vastly changed. So we're going to walk through that. You can see here, and again, this is reporting back from really 1920 school year, but you can see what the school performance reports really cover. Overall, yes, it is a requirement of ESEA and of course NJ DOE, but part of what this focus is, is to really hone in on lots of different data points. Everything from student assessments, state assessments, to absenteeism, to enrollment, and the list goes on. Of course, all of this information is able to be accessed on the New Jersey School Data dot org website. They did update a lot of information this year. They provided helpful one-pagers for both parents of the communities as well as for administrators and teachers and the like. So they are making improvements each year to help everyone continue to improve in terms of how we really disseminate this information.
And this is also attached to your board docs if the print gets really small, just FYI.
In addition, we do update this information on our school and district website. And then right now, it is under the district homepage and district headlines. It'll continue to remain there. Once this presentation is completed, again, part of the requirements is for us to update and share this information and a letter will be forthcoming from our superintendent, Dr. Gruccio, to all parents in the districts as well. So what kinds of information do the school performance reports typically include? You can see a list here, of course. I'm not going to read all these things to you. This is only just a sampling of the information that we typically would report out on. One of the things to note is the footnote that is here and the asterisk. And of course, some of the data, as noted, is not going to be available for this past year and mainly because of this global pandemic that we as a school district, as well as the rest of the state and country, has been faced with due to COVID-19. And of course, that may also impact subsequent years and performance reports that are forthcoming. In addition, this is what we would typically report out on. So for those of you in the public and of course the board, you know, I used to refer to this and last year, I think we were doing this virtually, and we referred to this, of course, as either your gas gauge in your car. And typically, that would be in reference to either our ELA test scores, our math test scores and the like. However, while this is what we normally would report on, because that information was not able to be obtained last year due to the pandemic, this is not going to be part of this year's presentation. But I wanted you to be able to kind of get a frame of reference for year-to-year and our annual requirements in regards to these performance reports. So COVID-19 impact. We all know where we've been living. It's impacted us all differently, but in the school districts, of course, one of the biggest impacts is being able to really obtain that information, whether through state testing and also other data which was impacted. Everything from the end of the year, when you think about even discipline and absenteeism data, all of those things, very hard to gather at the end of the conclusion of last year from March 17th forward. So you can, you can see again, this wouldn't be as conclusive as we have presented in previous years. However.
However, it did allow the state to take some time and make some changes and improvements to the way that they're presenting the data based on stakeholder feedback and to include some new elements for us. But first, they talk about what's not available. So obviously, the statewide assessment data, as Mr. Santilli already said, we will not be able to report out on, which means we won't be able to report out on student growth percentiles or our English language proficiency, as well as the absenteeism and other accountability measures for meeting those annual targets for the 1920 school year. But like I said, it did allow for some enhancements to be made. So there is a new design that makes it a little bit more user-friendly on the website, and additional data about graduation cohorts. And we'll get a little bit more into that, but there are different pathways that students can use to meet the graduation requirement, which started a few years ago when we switched from the PARC assessment to the NJSLA. So here's just a snapshot of our enrollment and demographics from 2017 school year through last year, just to help us get a picture of our students and the population, which will help us when we are looking at the data that we do collect and moving forward. So as you know, normally, in grades four to eight for ELA and four to seven for math, we do give student growth percentiles. So students are given a number based on comparison to the progress and growth that they make with their peers. And when it gets reported on the state report card, they're looking at the median number for that. And that's how they measure student, the school progress and district overall. Again, we do not have that data for the 1920 school year. So when we're reporting out on the next slide, you'll see that there is, next slide, please, sorry. You'll see that there is a blank spot there. So we met the target from 17 to 18 and 18 to 19. We will not have that comparison data for 1920, but we're hoping that with the release of using some statewide data in the fall in comparison to the spring, we'll be able to start monitoring student growth in this big picture way soon. Again, same idea with the statewide assessment proficiency. So that's usually what you're seeing with Mr. Santilli showed you with those fuel gauges in the beginning, that allows to see our proficiency rates. And without this comprehensive data comparison for this past year, we're looking at old data. And then also just keep in mind too, that that 1819 data was that year that the test changed. So we were also not looking at apples to apples with the test and the units that were given. Statewide assessment results, as we keep reiterating, are not really available for the 1920 school year. And even though we do not have the NJSLA, we will have access and the dynamic learning maps. They are being given currently and throughout the spring. So we will have that information moving into next year and be able to look at our English learners and our special education students and then hopefully in the fall with the Start Strong and then next spring moving forward. So what did we do at the end of last year to try and get some of that summative data on our students so we can move forward? Luckily, we did conclude all three cycles of our universal screening process before we left in March. Because we test three times a year as a formative assessment and use that to help form our student groups, we did administer that the week before we closed. And so then by the end of the year, we were able just to get some data input from our teachers reporting through our data warehouse on Linkit, as well as a survey on the standards that were taught in school and virtually and not at all. And we were able to use all those measures to help with curriculum and to help make placement for students and our summer, our September groups for students for our intervention services. As I mentioned before, there are different pathways that students can reach graduation. They vary depending on the year of what, when the students graduate. So well, as we go through, I'll explain that a little bit more. So here are our graduation rates. And this was reported last year, but the 2020 was added in. And then here are the pathways that our students take to achieve that graduation requirement. So one of the options at the top is that statewide assessment. So that is the NJSLA. It's grade 10 for ELA and Algebra I for math. They can also have another competency assessment. So for example, it could be the SAT, the ASVAB, the ACT. And then there's also the portfolio appeal process, which becomes a local process where students have to perform tasks, both in ELA and math. And then we submit that to the county for approval. Another addition to the reporting out on college and career readiness, looking at our rates of students who are participating in taking the SAT in our dual credit courses that we do offer at the high school, as well as our different CTE concentrations that we offer. Looking at visual and performing arts and the percentages of enrollment from six to 12. And as you know, dance and drama have been added in for the standards for next year. So we should see an increase in those percentages there. And back to Mr. Santilli.
So some other data points that they focus on, this is familiar to all of you, I'm sure. In regards to student safety, we do report out to the board and to the public at least twice a year in regards to our SSDS data and also HIB data. This is a snapshot of last year for 1920. As you know, the transition took place from EVVRS back in 2017-18, as noted there, to SSDS, which is the Student Safety Data System. And these totals reflect the 1920 school year. Again, keeping in mind that we transitioned in March to our all-virtual environment. Some other data points, early childhood education. Naturally, you see a three-year trend here. In addition to, you see your half-day totals. That will obviously change with the implementation of full-day kindergarten, as well as the implementation of full-day pre-K. Student support services are broken down. They typically will report out on student and staff ratios. And you can see them broken down here in regards to students to teachers and how it breaks down students to nurses and the like. You know, hazard ratios, and these are broken down district-wide, as noted. In addition, they also focus on post-secondary enrollment. This is information that I work on each year in the fall to collect with, from our Director of Guidance, Ms. Sam Elko. And you can see the post-secondary information. Again, it's important to note that this is an all-hands-on-deck approach. I don't think I mentioned that in the beginning. But in the fall, we will work with our principals and supervisors throughout the district to gather these narratives, to gather information, to make sure that we have the most relevant data to report to the state because that upload occurs during that time. You can see this post-secondary enrollment rates broken down in regards to demographics in comparison to the state. And then one thing to note, and I reported out on this last year, that our school, the high school, was identified for requiring a comprehensive or targeted support. It was category of students with disabilities. And you can see here what we talked about last year and how it was identified, and mainly because of low performance using multiple measures. And it was for two consecutive years. Now, because of that, what ends up happening is, is there's a needs assessment that is developed. Now, as you can imagine, most of what we talked about tonight is data that we don't have, right, because of the pandemic. But ultimately, we wanted to identify that these things are still taking place. It's just that we cannot come out of this status because there is nothing to show that we've met the criteria that we've identified in addressing these needs, identifying the strategies and creating our annual school-wide plan. And that plan is in effect and will continue to remain in effect until these things or we get back to some sense of normalcy to be able to show the state that we are meeting progress in this particular subgroup. And to wrap up, additional links and resources, you can see here, like I said, through the state school data site, all of this information is available, not just for EHT, but really everyone in the entire state, as well as other, you know, links and resources that you may find that you want to check out. And with that, that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moss, Mr. Santilli, for sharing that information. My next presentation is wrapped around the strategic plan. One thing I must say is that I'm very proud that this Board of Education and this administration, over the last three years, four years, have adhered to the strategic plan. Going back four years, you know, the board brought, just to repress those who were not here four years ago, the board brought in New Jersey school boards to facilitate a strategic plan. We've done them in the past, but we've never completed them in the past. So this strategic plan was a community input, had community input. Stakeholders were involved. Again, it was facilitated by New Jersey school boards representatives. And we took a little bit of a different approach. We wrapped this strategic plan around the Embrace, Engage, Educate. And I'll never forget Mary Ann Freeman having a conversation with me. She goes, "I'm ready to present it to your board, but I have to say, this is really new and different. I gotta, I gotta digest this a little bit." So she called me back. She goes, "You know what? We love it." She said, "It's a different approach. You're wrapping it around your mission focus. And, you know, I'm going to present it to the board that way, frame it that way, and, you know, we proceed it that way because it was easy for all to understand." So long story short, it was a collaborative effort. It was very goal-focused. And I know that, you know, we have stayed goal-focused through my tenure as superintendent. We had the vision. We had the goals. We planned and researched and executed and evaluated. And I think that little picture there really describes what we did. But Ms. Santilli, if you can click on Strategic Plan, which is public documented, located on the website. As you can see, there's three goals. Embrace. Quickly just go through this. My old eyes can't see here, but we have strategic priorities and then we had initiatives, right? So under, under the Embrace piece, we really did, and then put initiatives in place, particularly in the areas of the socio-emotional. And back then, it wasn't as live and prevalent as it is even before COVID, but now with COVID. So we really hit the nail on the head in terms of needs of students and of faculty. But we did have a lot of professional development and a lot of initiatives around socio-emotional learning. Pursuing Public Health is one example that I share in the district newsletter that you can see on the district website. Ms. Santilli led that and facilitated that initiative where he had interviews with public community members revolving around socio-emotional, mental health issues. We have life skills going on. Just with COVID, not only do we have counselors that were available online, but physically, but we also did those home visits. That was part of the socio-emotional piece. And regarding security, just to refresh your memory, we didn't have security here in the past, the way we do now as a full force. That was a vision. We wanted a security department. We only had security at the high school at one moment in time here. So we're very proud that we have a security force, beginning with class three officers, armed officers, armed security guards, unarmed security guards. We made changes physically to our vestibules, radio upgrade. We have a security vehicle. So there's a lot of things that we added on to the, to security because we heard the public as well. Stakeholders had concern. What about the elementary schools? You know, aren't they secured? Aren't they being protected? So we're proud to sit here today and say that we have a PK to 12 security force with every building having security guards. Moving on to the next initiative, which was Engage and Community Partnerships. If you can just click on the Community Partnerships, this gives you a quick list of the community partnerships that we have established. It goes on and on. And one, most recent one is Garden State Academy with our preschool now. Our Medical Science Academy has established many, many relationships with the community. We have relationships with the food bank, with the Acreboro Township Police Department, and the different colleges in the area. So we really have reached out in many areas, building community relationships. And we will continue to do so because there's more relationships to be had. Ms. Santilli, you can keep going on. Next strategic plan, keep going. We encourage community pride with our Pride Day. And then the Educate piece with the student achievement. And we have done so much here. Mr. Castellano mentioned how this budget, in particular, moving from here backwards entails and contains the one-on-one technology for students. We've done a lot of work with INRS and RTI, NTT. We have brought in resources, and you're familiar with Linkit for data collection, informative assessment. We've gone to a standard-based reporting and grading. We have developed programs for aviation, and that was a vision that we had. We have academies. We practice the universal design. We've improved our related arts in the middle school. And we really expanded our stream. And this is just an overall summary of our strategic plan and things that we've worked on. But first and foremost, we really want to highlight what's in yellow there. And that was something years ago, we were like, whoa, we've heard this for many, many years. And Lou will tell you, that one's going to be interesting as we pursue that. But we sit here proud to say, wow, we have full-day pre-K and full-day kindergarten. So again, kudos to having a vision. So, again, kudos to having a vision, listening to stakeholders, building it into a plan, following the plan, and sitting here saying, we pretty much accomplished that plan. And rightfully so, timely, it's very timely, because really, if we kept on pace on what we had to do, this year, we would be preparing for a strategic plan. But we all know what happened. COVID hit us. And let's applaud ourselves regarding COVID, because if you remember last Jan, July, as an example, that five-hour meeting where eight hundred stakeholders participated, the Board of Education, the administration, that right there was a strategic plan in itself, right? So we sat there, and we were faced with the unknowns, and we had to make a plan with great guidance as to how we were going to engage this, embrace this new school year, one that was never before. So, we've done a lot of strategic planning. So, I just want to tell, let's share with the board, and I've been meaning to do this for many, many meetings, that we didn't forget about it, okay? We're still following, and at the end of this, a couple of slides, just going to inform you that it's probably going to be time to look at when we need to set up meetings for strategic planning again. So, Ms. Santilli, just click out of that, and let's move on to where I'm going with this. Part of the strategic plan here had to do with reconfiguration. I will refresh your memory. Two years ago, a year and a half ago, in the fall, we, right in this room, we had town hall meetings regarding reconfiguration, and we listened from elementary, for elementary input, middle school input, and high school input, and we received all kinds of suggestions and feedback, and we looked at that. And, you know, there was a lot of planning going on behind the scenes in my conference room, and district-wide, we're always working on a project. With yen, COVID hitting and having the front burner, I do want to share with you something that we've had on the back burner, that we feel can come into fruition. Now that we have pre-K and kindergarten in place, we've disrupted some of the grade-level alignments in our buildings. So in order to make things flow, and to be more consistent, concise, continue with education, streamlining education, not only for students, but for the teachers, we are looking at three schools of reconfiguration, which would be Swift Elementary School, Slayball Elementary, and Slayball Primary. This is the drone's eye view of the complex of the Swift Drive, and I'm looking to call this the Swift-Slayball Complex, and apply to the county to consolidate the three buildings into one school, if you will. So, Swift. So what this reconfiguration has looked like, and I just want to, again, remind folks what we did last year. So with Davenport Primary Elementary Schools, we made some movements of classrooms, we pulled the preschool out, and kindergarten in first grade is in Davenport Primary. Davenport Elementary houses second and third grade, okay? So in the administration there is one principal and one assistant principal. Moving on to 2122, what we're looking at is proposing for Slayball Primary to continue to be the preschool, and the MSD preschool school. I will remind you, there are three kindergarten classrooms in there at this time. The rest of the kindergarten is over at Swift. So in order to get all kindergartens together, we take the Swift Elementary School and place all kindergartens from the Swift and Slayball schools into the Swift School, along with first grade. And then we move the second and third grades from Swift into Slayball Elementary, so that all second and third grades in this complex are together, and then the administration would look like one principal and two assistant principals. This is, again, reconfiguration that we have been studying, researching, walking buildings, counting classrooms, looking at space. Ms. Santilli, Ms. Moss, they were involved in that. They've had discussions with facilities, with Ms. Anaya, personnel, with Dr. Charlton. So it has been a team effort in this research, and I just wanted to share with you something that you can digest. This is a work session. Next slide. And, again, what I, how I opened up, coming your way, is some sort of strategic planning for the next three years, because there are, based on stakeholder feedback, you know, great ideas and suggestions for us to consider and build into a plan. I want to remind you that a strategic plan can be anywhere from three to five years, you know, depending on the information that we have, but, you know, that's for down the road, and probably a topic for a board retreat at some point, okay? So I wanted to share what we're thinking. We can have discussion, but that's where this administration is, in terms of, like I said, getting things better aligned. Okay. With that, Mr. Castellano, that concludes the presentations for the educational side of the House. We do have some finance now that we'd like to share. Ms. Anaya has a presentation, I should say, update on the 2122 budget.
We thank you very much, and just as we're transitioning into that, let's all keep in mind, in past strategic plannings, we've thought, what are we going to do K through five? So we have to keep that in the back of our minds, that that's one of the next things we have to think about in strategic planning. All right.
Thank you. So this is brief. The county office approved our budget over spring break, so that was exciting. What that means is they approved the total that was submitted to them. I did tell you prior to submitting that there were a few changes within lines, such as tuition and personnel and things, that I made changes to. No reason to print another 80 pages plus of your binders. This is the recap of it. You will get officially, like, the final binder, so you can have it for your reference for the entire school year. But I did want to go through some of the lines, just in case there was any questions, before you actually have a budget hearing next week. So, Mid-America, we did speak briefly about the sick-time payout at the end of the year for those who have put into the system and are actually retiring. We do invest money on their behalf into an investment in their sick-time payout. There was another retirement in February, so we just added that person, only a $700 change, but the line is going to be different. Personnel, there were several lines to do between breakage. Personnel, for example, paraprofessionals that were in the preschool program that got moved into the preschool program, and your original budgets are still in their home line, they just got moved into the preschool program. So it's just a couple of different lines that changed there. Offset by the difference, I believe the curriculum committee did hear this, maybe you'll hear more about it later, there is a letters program that's going to be happening, or professional development that's going to be happening next year. So the breakage in personnel was offset by the professional development line. Out of district tuition, this is transient students as well as special ed. When it all shook out, it's a $95,000 savings. Difference, human error, we didn't budget that $1 for tuition reimbursement, as per the union contract. $101,000 had to be budgeted, so we added that line into there. The JIF insurance renewal did come in a little higher than expected, as well as Facilities Department, so they have, the CEFM certification requires ongoing education. Since we do have new supervisors in the past few years, they are going through those programs as well, and the line was missed to budget for planning for that, because they don't get the actual union reimbursements, as they are not union employees. Teachers apply orders. We heard you, last meeting. It went from 75 to 100, the difference being $20,000. That was also adjusted in the budget as well. So the net change, prior to going to the county, was a zero net change. Those are the few lines that changed. Wanted to make sure I communicated that, if there were any questions or concerns, prior to actually having your budget hearing next week. So, that's my update. Okay.
Anyone? Board members?
Yes.
Okay.
The lobby, right? Okay. Thank you.
And I want to revise and extend my remarks. We'll now be considering pre-K through five alignment. In what buildings should what students be pre-K through five? Okay. I believe we are now ready to move into Finance and Operations. So I'm going to ask for our Finance and Operations Committee report, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. The report is going to reflect from Tuesday, April 30, 6 o'clock PM. We met here at Alder. Attendees were myself, Michael Price, Chair, Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Delaji, Ms. Anaya, Dr. Grusio, and Ms. Fisher, Director of Transportation, was here. Committee updates, we went down the list. We had a lot of things that we had to cover, and we did it in the hour or so, but I'm sure you'll have some questions. It's a work-in-process. Transportation, there's the recruitment rollout. It's on the website, social media, local stores, churches. We talked about trying to get the word out that we need drivers, we need bus drivers. It goes on, we discussed about training. We talked about the driver meetings that were held recently. We talked about updates on the Transportation Department. There'll be different tiers that'll be scheduled in April, so that's something that we'll follow up with. We went on to Food Service. Mr. Beck will be on the leave of absence beginning April 21. Ms. Anaya will cover and be physically at the building two days a week at Alder, Mondays and Wednesdays. Facilities, May agenda, next month, there'll be a presentation of capital projects with Mr. Brunetta, Mr. Hopkins. There was discussion about the Alder Middle School and High School HVAC replacement, and we're going to present something in regard to that, probably at the next meeting coming up as well. A lot of work that went into it. The handle on furniture was transferred to the warehouse. It was enough to be Phase One removal. It'll be completed. We talked about storage of the furniture, so that's being completed hopefully. It should be the end of May that a swap out can occur. Over the summer, then the new furniture will be put in place, or the donated furniture will be put in place where necessary throughout the district. I'm sure Ms. Anaya will comment on that one when we get to it. Project updates, burglar alarm system at high school and Slayball Complex completed, moving along great. Vestivales, the architect put the contractor out on notice to be responsible for a lack of completion of certain things, so the notification went out for that. Davenport Concrete completed, Fernwood Middle School Elevator, parts have been ordered, looking for summer replacement. Spring bids are out. We're going to be doing bids for some projects that are coming along. Business Office, we just had a presentation from Ms. Anaya now that pretty much covered what I was going to discuss on the Business Office, but we do have a couple of people on medical leave and one vacancy. And then we wanted to talk about the impact of Policy 7231 crowdfunding, which was discussed with the Policy Committee. We discussed that as well, so. Preschool Grant was approved by the state for 2122. Preschool Financial Analysis Interviews will be conducted, and hopefully we'll be able to get that on the 4/27 agenda. Then there'll be some action items for Tuesday to 27. 2021 Budget Hearing, Renewals, rubbish removal, Class III renewal. There's going to be a resolution for Atlas Avenue Paper Street Swap with the township. I'm sure you saw that on your board docs. Risk Management Consultant Renewals coming up. Cape May Co-op for Transportation for 2122, 6421 items, and 21st Century Aspire for the Year 505, and among other items discussed. I pretty much gave, pretty much gave you highlights of everything, because it's very involved, very in-depth, but I'm sure Ms. Anaya was following along, and will be able to fill in the blanks, so to speak, so. That concludes my report, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. And for the board, you have the report in your board docs, so I will not go into further detail regarding that specifically. There are just a few highlights regarding the transportation onboarding. We did have a meeting with the union today, and we are moving forward with looking at, we're calling it dual role staff. We talked about before, paraprofessionals, custodians, possibly cafeteria workers, being able to drive buses as well as still servicing the district in their other capacity. We are also working with the workforce development on trying to recruit through that avenue as well. The HVAC, just one, we are going to be presenting a lot of facilities information for the next meeting, but just on this agenda, because it's for action, I want to just highlight the recommendations. We have to replace two units that have, you know, exhausted their lives, at Alder and at the high school. We looked at, it was actually in February when it happened, and we were getting proposals through our ed-data process, which is a bidding process that, you know, gets bids for us. Those vendors were not interested in doing the replacement. We spoke to our architect about doing a bid, and the proposal they came up with to go out to bid was about $300,000. We did speak with a vendor who actually did the ventilation at the high school, who we have a great relationship with, and asked him to take a look at it, and he came in with $167,000 proposal. So we went with that, and that's what's actually on the agenda to replace those two units. That led to further conversation, which you'll hear more about, as far as the capacity of our own staff and our own process for future improvements outside of the true bidding architect process, but more to follow. It's exciting news. The furniture, for those taking a tour of the Garden State Academy, you will be able to see some rooms are still intact with the furniture. They have us removing them in phases. The first phase was before April 30, the next by May 31, and then the next one by June 30. So when you're in there, you'll be able to just take a look at that. On the crowdfunding, just from my committee, just an update, it turned out to not have a fiscal impact, so that was, nothing further to discuss on that. You will see, it's not on this agenda, that will be added. A lot of discussions have been happening at the high school. I do believe there's going to be a prom contract change. Once we have all the final details, it'll be added to the agenda before this Friday for action for next week. And while I have the microphone, I will go ahead and do the questions from board members from the agenda that was posted on Friday that were asked to us, for us to respond to. So on this bill list, we have some bills for payment that have a descriptor called the grounds building remodel. As you all know, we replaced our facilities building a few, maybe two years now, and the grounds building is actually right next door to the older building. That was the meeting space and locker room area. They are now, just using our own staff, opening up the area, so they have a bigger break room. The lockers are now located into the new building. There are some pest treatments on this agenda. We discussed, on this agenda is also the renewal for the Class III officers. There is a new township administrator, however, they don't start until at least May 1st, so this contract does still have the old administrator on there. Those are not mine. And I think that concludes my section of those questions. Thank you.
Do we have any board member questions or comments on Finance and Operations? Okay, seen none. We'll go ahead and move into Curriculum, and I'll ask for our committee report, please.
Good evening. On April 13, 2021, the Curriculum Committee met. In attendance was Mr. Delavarka, Ms. Gilbert Floyd, Ms. Burr, Mr. Santilli, Dr. Grusio, Ms. Moss, and as well as myself. The meeting was held virtually through Google Meet, beginning at 5:00 PM. The professional development for staff that will need board approval was identified and shared with the committee. There were no anticipated field trips requiring approval due to COVID-19. Other updates for the committee focused on athletics, specifically approvals for summer camps, and investigating the possibility to offer transportation back to the high school for sports or activities that practice at a district such as Kirk. An update in participation numbers were shared for Atlantic Prevention Resources, Strengthening Families Program, and plans to expand this program and its impact on students, staff, and parents was also discussed. A curriculum and instruction update included sharing the state memo regarding suspension of the NJSLA for the spring and the release of the state performance reports for the 2019-2020 school years. A reading committee update was provided with a focus on professional development around the science of reading for all elementary teachers and interventionalists. However, more exploration and alignment- However, more exploration and alignment of resources is still occurring, and a comprehensive plan will be forthcoming. Also, an update around the district plan for learning delay or learning loss was shared, and a more comprehensive plan is also forthcoming. Other discussions for the future include the integration of surveys and our needs assessment for all stakeholders to positively impact climate and culture throughout the That is my report.
Thank you. Does administration have anything to add?
So there is one point on there around...
I'm not sure we can hear you.
You can use the microphone.
So there is one approval on there where we are going to have a teacher who will be trained in social emotional practices for the classroom, to be able to help assist teachers with integration into everyday practice within the classroom during our professional days next year with the social emotional learning piece.
Very good. Do we have any questions or comments from board members on curriculum? Mrs. Bird.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that we have done a lot of, we've done a lot of, we've talked extensively about literacy in the district, and in our discussions, it's come up that bringing an outside entity in to discuss with the curriculum committee more about literacy and evidence-based practices is something that the curriculum committee was interested in, and the Reading League has offered to come in and present to the curriculum committee for free some literacy-based practices that many school districts are utilizing, and the curriculum committee has agreed that they think that is a good idea. So I just wanted to add that to the report, that hopefully we can bring them in, and if the curriculum committee agrees, they can also report out to the full board.
Very good. Ms. Sullivan.
I would like to, I would like that to be presented to the whole board, so we can just see it right off the bat rather than, you know, seeing it secondhand. So possibly, we could have a presentation before one of our, at one of our meetings? How does that fit?
The Reading League did offer to do a presentation to the full board, either a full hour or a half hour, whenever the board, the pleasure of the board is. So that offer was made, and it is free of cost. So if that is the pleasure of the rest of the board, then I'm sure that administration can set that up.
Maybe we should see if there's any other board members available, because I can come to the meeting, your meeting, to see that, but if there's other board members, then it should be available to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, that's fine. Why don't we think of it in stages? Come to the curriculum first, and then, as we do with many of our consultants and professionals, then come the next time full board?
Just for a minute, just trying to make sure I understand. So they offered to come, so they're coming to your curriculum, or this is just the first, like, offering? I'm just curious on what...
So they offered to come to speak to the full board, but then amongst discussion of curriculum committee?
So at committee level?
Then we put it at the committee level. However, if there's interest from the full board, because, you know, literacy is something that we obviously make decisions on, you know, on a monthly basis here. If there's any numbers beside Ms. Sullivan who would be interested in hearing a presentation in front of the full board, that is something that can be arranged.
To the whole board.
Go ahead, Steve.
I just want to make a suggestion, if it's possible. We did talk about the Reading League and the curriculum committee, but very, very briefly, I know that there's been information that you have shared, and of course, it's something that we're open to, but I just want to put a suggestion out there before even moving to the full board, to possibly have that be a deeper discussion at the next curriculum committee meeting, possibly even having somebody that is willing to present to the committee first to get that information. You know, we've only had the ability to, for instance, go online and take a look at the resources that you've provided, which we're appreciative of, and we're trying to move in that right direction and continue to grow, as you know. That would just be a suggestion I'm making from, you know, from my lens, just, and I'm not sure how Ms. Moss feels about that, or any other members, or Ms. Albarta as, you know, Chair. So just putting that suggestion out there as well.
I do think that the curriculum committee, we did discuss it, maybe not at the curriculum meeting, but separately as a curriculum committee. And so I guess, I mean, whichever level administration wants us to, but it sounds like there are board members who are interested in hearing information on literacy. So, you know, if there are any other members who would like to keep it at committee level, we can do that, but maybe we should take a straw there.
Wait, can we clarify what you've got on here, please?
I want to give an example, if I can, if what I understand is happening. So Division of Local Government Services is an entity, it's a nonprofit organization. They give guidance to business administrators, school districts, and municipalities. If they wanted to come talk to my finance committee, finance is the full board, budget's the full board, but I don't even, like, what the message would be, or what their purpose is, or what they're going to recommend. So I think they're trying to keep it at committee level versus full board. I'm translating it to finance. If I understand it correctly, that's what I was trying to figure out where we were. Does that sound like what it is? Or is that off?
That is, that's where I was thinking in terms of my suggestion in regards to bringing it to committee first. You know, I think that we're open, of course, to hearing what the, you know, what the individuals have to say is in terms of their expertise. You know, I look at it through an administrative lens, and also the work of the curriculum committee first, to be able to vet this information and kind of really just have conversation at the committee level before it's brought before the board. And also, just also from the administrative lens is, you know, the work that we've been doing, not just as a committee, but also as an administrative team. I look at Ms. Moss as an expert in this field, of course, as a supervisor previously of English Language Arts in the district, now Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. I just think that we'd be better suited to have that conversation first as a committee, and then see what the committee comes up with in regards to moving that forward.
Okay, seeing Ms. Sullivan, but then I want to get to, I'm going to ask the Chair.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the whole thing. I thought this conversation had already taken place at a curriculum meeting, so I'm going to withdraw my request ahead for the whole board for now. I really thought the whole committee had already discussed it with administration, so I'm going to back off of that for now.
Well, so what happened was, we did discuss the Reading League, and I presented that I had a meeting with the Reading League for something for my own classroom, and in that discussion, they said, oh, well, you know, we come to schools, and I said, oh, let me contact the committee, and I did. And the committee said, yeah, and previous to that, I said, maybe we should bring in someone from the outside, just to, you know, bring in some more research, things like that, because we've had so many discussions. And I am not an expert, so I sought out experts. So that's where, so the discussion did take place, and the discussion did take place amongst the committee, so.
But were administrators included in that?
After, yeah. Well, they weren't, no, they were included in with the Reading League, the appointment on Friday, bringing in an expert, yes, all of that. So it was nothing like, that wasn't discussed. Am I correct in saying that?
Let me go ahead and defer to Teri, his Chair, and Ms. Albarta.
So we did discuss it memoritarily in committee, but, you know, in the email that Ms. Bird sent, we said, we all, as a committee, said we would be interested in hearing what the Reading League had to say, and then I said we need to let administration know.
Right.
So we would like to hear it. So I think that it's most appropriate for them to come to one of our committee meetings and to present to us, and then, if it's something that we think everybody should hear, maybe then have it as a full board meeting.
That sounds like a great plan. Thank you.
Ms. Gilbert Floyd.
I just want to just state or suggest that I know that we, I feel like in the committee meeting, and I'm on board with whatever, you know, the committee wants to do as a whole, I think we have had a lot of discussions around literacy and reading, and I just said to Ms. Albarta, I was like, oh, I think, I, being honest, I said, not saying waste, but I don't want, I didn't want to take another one of our committee meetings just because we meet once a month, and it just makes, it makes me go back to how when we brought in the disease specialist, infection? Yes, when we brought him in, and he spoke, you know, he shared his information, even though we already have a school doctor, you know, that we have, that, you know, in that area, and we do have administration who are, you know, go first in reading and literacy, I look at it, it's kind of in the same framework as the person who will come and present information that would just add to. And I don't, and in my mind, I think they would add to, but not take away from what we already have here to offer. So I think we just need to look at it, whether we do it in the committee first, or whether we do it full board. I think it needs to be looked at as a collaborative effort, and sometimes it may feel a little uncomfortable, like, you know, who's, you know, who's people we're bringing in? We already have what we need, you know, just like we brought in the doctor to come in and share some additional information in conjunction with our district doctor. So I'm just, I just thought about it in that aspect, just to put a little bit of, you know, in it.
Very good. Okay, so we're all, we're all good to go?
We're going to do it in the committee, or are we going to do it...
We're going to honor the Chair.
Okay.
We have a plan.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. All right.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
All right. Let's go ahead for personnel. I don't think Dr. Charlton's going to have anything for open session this week, but I could be wrong.
We just did have one update, Mr. President. It was a question about regarding, are we going to continue the pandemic rates for substitutes come September, which is a good question, because it's going to be here before we know it. But basically, the plan is over the next seven weeks, we're going to look at the fill rate data, because there's two changes that have a significant effect on the demand side of the supply-demand equation, and that's the fact that we're returning to five days a week, so that increases our demand 20%, one out of five days. And then the other contributing factor is the fact that quarantine restrictions have been very relaxed now on staff, so that has a tendency to decrease the demand. So we want to see where the numbers and the data falls in terms of the next seven weeks compared to where we were in the past couple of months, and then June 22nd, administration will make a recommendation for September and advertise that way over the summer.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Any board member question or comments in the personnel area? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move into policy, and I'll ask for our policy committee report.
Thank you. On April 13th, members of the policy committee met to discuss policy agenda items. Present at the meeting were Mr. Ireland, Mr. Castellano, Mrs. Leigie, Mr. Santilli, Ms. Moss, Dr. Grusio, Amy Hoffelco, and Elizabeth White. The policies discussed were Policy 7440, School District Security, and Policy 8420, Emergency and Crisis Situations. They were both reviewed and discussed. The proposed revisions are noted in bold and recommended by Strauss S. May. They are mandated policies. Policy 7231, Property Policy, Crowdfunding, was discussed. The committee is in agreement that current draft is in need of additional revisions to more accurately align the intent of the policy with the language of said policy. Mrs. Amy Elko will make revisions, and the committee will review at our next committee meeting, are to present in Policy 7231 to the board for second and final reading. Policy 5200, Attendance, was also discussed. No current changes or revisions were made. Bylaw 0169, Board Member Use of Internet, Social Networks, and Other Forms of Electronic Communications, was discussed again. I need a new word. Bylaw 0169 is a hybrid policy, combining both Strauss S. May 0169 and NJSBA's Policy 9271. Both high respected entities have outlined policies which set social media parameters to protect boards of education from misuse of internet communications. These parameters are in addition to, except for, the NJSBA Code of Ethics that board members attest to upon swearing in, and as evidenced by both of these policies, Strauss S. May and NJSBA have these policies in existence because of previous problems. So thank you for your consideration, and any input that you have regarding any of these policies, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any comments from administration? Any board member comment or question? Ms. Sullivan.
We've had a long night tonight, and with our executive session, that I'm going to reserve my comments. I will be voting no on this, and I think I'll save my comments until next week, but I just want you to know that I am not in favor of this. I think when we take the oath that that should be enough for us, and we also have a policy already that says we'll follow the Ethics Committee requirements, so I believe that that should cover everything. So I will discuss further next week.
Any other board, Mr. Ireland?
During our policy meeting, we talked about amending or changing that bylaw, the last paragraph. That's still going to happen, I believe. So what we see here now is not what's going to be for the next following meetings. The last paragraph, I believe, is going to change, and I don't want to speak anymore on that. Mrs. Chair, if you want to talk about that more, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ireland. Yes, when Ms. Sullivan was speaking, I grabbed it out because it reminded me that that last paragraph, Mrs. Leigie made a great point during our policy committee meeting, and after reviewing that last paragraph, we were all in agreement that it was a very subjective, so we were pulling that. So that should be crossed out. So when you do review before next week, maybe having that omitted from the policy might change your vote, but if not, you know, we understand. Yeah, so that last, you know, the last paragraph, I believe we had discussed, taking that out.
So will next week be the first reading then? Because we can't have a first reading if it's not complete, can we? I'm not sure.
Next week will be first reading.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments? Mr. Price.
Yeah, I have a question on policy, the, not this one, but the school security, district security policy. There's things in here that I don't want to discuss because they're securely related, but I just wanted to get a clarification towards the bottom of the policy. I know it's a draft, where it says access to school buildings and grounds outside the hours of school is in session shall be limited to personnel whose employment requires a presence in the facility. Does that mean that if somebody happens to come around riding a bicycle, or takes a walk around the grounds on a weekend, or throws a frisbee, plays ball, or whatever, does that mean that they cannot do that? And if you read that specifically, it says limited to personnel whose employment requires their presence in the facility. They would have to be an employee, according to this. So that means that nobody, unless an employee, can be here the way that I'm reading this.
So I believe it's written that way for liability purposes, so you don't have individuals here that, well, there's not proper supervision?
So it will have to be an employee, that's it. No citizens, or taxpayers, or community members can walk onto the property, according to this, is that right?
Currently, that's the way the policy is written. If you want the committee to certainly look at it, they can with a different lens, but I believe for insurance purposes.
Well, because I'm concerned that there may be people right now that could be in violation of this policy. Even this afternoon, when I came in, I saw people that didn't appear to be employees.
I'm going to defer to the business administrators looking at me for...
Yes, thank you. So outside of use of facilities where the community has permission, we're just going to say if a student or if a community member happens to be riding their bike in our parking lot, and there was a crack in the asphalt, and they hurt themselves, we will not be personally liable because they were not authorized to ride their bike... their bike on our property. So, does it happen? Yes, but this is protecting us as a board to say, the only people authorized to be on our grounds are those required, and it says personnel, meaning emergency personnel, not necessarily an employee. So, that's the only people authorized, outside of use of facility policy, which does allow for people to be on our premises through that policy. So, I hope that helps. If they either have permission, or if not, it's really just authorized personnel.
Well, it does it away, but it still doesn't fulfill, it's kind of like conflicting with this policy, because this policy clearly spelled it out. They must be an employee. That's it.
Actually, Mr. Price, I believe what it's talking about is shall be limited to personnel whose employment requires their presence, so not necessarily personnel, Egger Township School District personnel, but it could be like if the fire company had to come here, like personnel that would have to be here for that type of purpose, an emergency, a police officer fulfilling a purpose for the facility need.
Okay. I'm just concerned, though, that this could cause a problem to people that walk onto our property, that aren't an employee of something that you mentioned, or an employee of the district.
And I think the example that Mrs. and I was trying to bring is that we're not here to monitor individuals. So, if individuals come to our property, while we're not here to watch them, and somebody is injured, we want to make sure that we're saying we're not inviting people here on hours where we don't have proper supervision.
Well, do you have signs out now that says post it, no trespassing?
I defer to Mrs. and I on that question.
I don't believe we do, and I can look into that for sure.
I mean, I just have a problem, because it's a public, public building, the public schools, taxpayers pay for this, and they're going to, for instance, maybe drive their car in here in a parking lot, maybe meet somebody, or have lunch, or whatever the case may be. I feel that, you know, that they should have a right to do that.
And I do believe we know that does happen. I know, for example, somebody, a student was practicing driving when they hit our district car. So, we do know it happens. We are not running them off when we see them. We are not calling the police when we see them. It's not that type of unauthorizedation. It's just protecting us to say, if anything happens while you are here, the only people authorized to be here, or if you need to be here for your specific position or protection of the district, and/or use of facilities authorizations. So, it's not saying...
Well, that eliminates a lot of other people.
They don't have permission, and that's true. They don't have permission to test-drive their cars in our parking lots, but it's not necessarily, we're not going to call the cops on them, if that makes sense. We're not, you know, I hear you. We're not, we're not running them off. We're not running community members off.
Okay. Well, I, I'm not completely, I'm not completely comfortable with that, so I just wanted to mention it. Okay? So, we'll stick out the grant due. Thank you. That's my comment.
Okay. Ms. Bird, go ahead.
This was a mandated policy change, so that's why it came. But I completely agree that our buildings and our grounds are public entities that, obviously, we need to protect liability-wise, but that, you know, we also, at the same time, want to welcome people, you know, to feel comfortable, you know, maybe on our playground, or shooting a basketball outside, or doing things like that. So, maybe we can add to our policy agenda a little bit more discussion about things like that.
Mr. Ireland, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I fully agree on that, but I believe that this policy is directly for school district security. So, that may be a discussion for a different policy, but for this policy, I think it was just because it's mandated because of those certain criteria for the law, and it's just specific to security. And I believe maybe we could bring that up in our policy committee for facility use. That's a great point, Mr. Price, but I believe it does not fit into this policy. So, if we can go forward from there, greatly appreciate.
And that, I think that gets back into our whole use of facility policy, which developed over many, many years. There's a lot, a lot of history there over making sure that we are able to properly support and supervise folks that are here. Go ahead, Mrs. Gilbert.
I'm kind of switching back to the social media policy for board members. I just, I guess I was trying to recall, how long have we been in discussion in reference to this policy? I'm just saying, I know you said you had to find another word for discussion, because we...
So, I think it goes back to January began, and, and it's been on the agenda a few times, but we, we brought it back to, you know, listen to everyone and make sure that we come up with a plan that works for our board.
Okay, that works for our board, and I, okay. And you did make a statement in reference to the fact that when you were reading your notes, that I think you put in there for one of the reasons why we have this policy, or why it was even brought up?
Yeah.
Was due to...
Yes, we brought this, well, the policy was added to the agenda, because lots of other districts have a policy, and in order to prevent a future problem, we sought the guidance of Strauss Esme and NJ SBA to see if we needed a policy. When we saw that they have lengthy policies, that's when we brought it to the agenda, you know, to add for our board as a discussion piece, and followed suit with those two very recrutable companies that we use all the time for our policies.
And then this policy also was table at one point?
It, it went back to the drawing board, I would say. We brought it back to the committee level to, you know, listen to suggestions and recommendations from board members, and we had a very, very productive discussion, I feel, at the committee level, our last policy committee. We took suggestions and talked through some things, and so we brought it, and with that elimination of the last paragraph, and hearing some of the concerns, we felt as a committee to bring it forth for the work session, to discuss it here.
So, just to continue on with the social media, I believe it's been an advisory opinion throughout NJ SBA multiple times. It's brought up because it helps shield our district, and it also gives us expectations on what we need to go forward, and what we need to meet. But I just ask if other board members can just submit their emails, or their questions in emails, because we've been hitting this since January of, at committee level, and we've been back and forth, back and forth, just for time's sake, and for continuity and transparency. Can we just have questions instead of waiting until some of these meetings to air it out? Because we can air it out in the meetings and so, but we're now in April, we won't touch it until May, possibly, for first reading. It won't be submitted until, we're talking about many, many months here. So, if we can, just for time's sake, and to get this correct the first time, and the second time, so we can fully go through it, if we can have board members submit the questions, and Mrs. Chair, if I was out of line, let me know on that. But I just feel as a policy committee member, that would help me answer some of those questions, and kind of see their viewpoint on that, instead of waiting until the very last second. That's it.
I was just going to say, that's one of the reasons why I asked some of the questions that I posed, just to kind of put it on the table, because it seems to be, and if we have to go back and wait another couple of months to get the right policy, and get it written in a format that is, that works for all of us, maybe even, you know, I think that then we have to do that, too. I just wanted to get a timeline, because I believe that we had started in the beginning of the year, and this seems to be, you know, a very hot topic and sensitive issue, so.
Well, I think what the committee is recommending is that first reading be next Thursday. So, if anyone has specific amendments, we, you know, we entertain them, but first reading will be next Thursday. Yes, Mrs. Sullivan?
Well, then I will bring up now, is there anyone else concerned that your social media is going to be reviewed by people that you are equal with on the school board? Nobody has a problem with your personal pages. I'm not talking about a school board page. I'm talking about a personal page, and the comments that are made on there. You, other board members, will judge me on what I say, like the example we had last week? No, I'm asking you a question. Does anybody else have a problem with your personal page being monitored by a fellow board member and brought up to you?
I can lock my page to any private settings, and I think that's what we need, we need to be cognizant of, as social media goes out there, and maybe talk to our IT, or whatever, but there's, there are signs out there that you could lock it down to certain people or individuals, or whatever, so.
Exactly, and I have a personal page with my friends.
I have a problem, and I will be submitting what I come up with as far as a bylaw, but I will not support anything to the length of what we discussed at the policy meeting.
Mrs. Bird, then Mr. Price.
So, I think with this policy, I, I view it from the lens of supporting the board as a whole, and not as a gotcha. And without that last paragraph, because I am in 100% agreement, that last paragraph that we struck out, that was very subjective, and it definitely, I think, was not the intent of this policy. The intent of the policy is to remember that what we say, and, and what we project on social media, unfortunately, is perceived, whether we intended it to be one way or not, or not. And having this policy in place is not to catch anyone doing something wrong, it's to remind ourselves that we represent the district, and like it lumped it, if it's on our personal pages, or on a public page, people perceive us still as public entities. And even though we're volunteers, you know, what we say can be twisted, and misinterpreted, and it, and that's not our intention in any way. I don't think any of us ever want to do anything that hurts our community, or Egger Township Schools, or each other, for sure, and I certainly don't want anyone to feel like they're being censored from expressing their opinions. I think the intent of this is to protect us from ourselves, almost, you know. So, without that last paragraph, there's no, it, it's like reminding ourselves of what we should be doing. No one's going to catch you in it, now that we've removed that last paragraph. It's, it's like self-policing. It's a reminder of, okay, let me follow these steps. Let me make sure I'm following these steps, because unfortunately, we've all seen it on social media this last year. It's been brutal. And, I mean, you could say, it's raining today, and all of a sudden, you know, it's turned into this crazy land. So, it's, you know, I, I see this as like a reminder for me to take a deep breath before I post. So, you know, I see it as a team thing, and not a gotcha thing.
Teamwork and ethics is what it's about.
I have such a migraine, so I can't even put a sentence together. So, I'm sorry, I'm not eloquent. I'm just pulling words and shoving it, so I apologize.
Let me try to get every one, I got Mr. Price next.
Okay, yeah, I can comment on this yet, but I, on this, on this particular policy, the way I'm reading it, I think the policy makes sense. It's just common sense anyway, and it more or less says board members are advised to. It's not like saying they're required to, and it basically says that when using, using social media and networks, use care and good judgment. And it basically says what members should do, and what members are advised to do. It doesn't say anything about required to do, and I, I think it's pretty much common sense, good guidelines to follow. So, that's my opinion on it.
Okay, I'm going to try to get the order right. Elba, Mrs., Mr. Ireland, and then Mrs. Sullivan. I think I got that order right. Doing my best.
So, I understand how this is kind of scary, because, and I'll equate it to what I had to go through a few years ago, when, guessing my district kind of talked to us about policy with what we're posting, and that it could be looked at. And not only that, but professionally, as a teacher, I stopped posting a lot of what I used to post, because parents or other colleagues could take it the wrong way, and take offense to it, and, you know, I became very careful about what I started posting on personal media. It was very scary at first. I always think about what I'm posting. Really, everything's about my children now, so it doesn't really matter. But it is, it's a big change, and I understand why it's scary, and it's just, I think, making us think about what we're saying, and that we're sensitive to everybody, because the last year or so has changed everyone. It really has, and I think just becoming more sensitive to the way people think, and they feel, it's, it's really important. And I, I've learned a lot about this lately. I've had some things go on with people I know in my life, and you just don't know what people are going through, and some things that you post could really offend people, and set them over the edge. And it, it's just trying to be careful about what you're doing, and what you're saying, and really caring about everybody and the world they're living in right now.
Mr. Ireland, and then Mrs. Sullivan.
Mrs. Elko, I have just a question, because I ask it every single policy meeting. So, about this policy, is this commonplace? And if so, how many districts does your organization represent are forming some sort of policy or bylaw that, in regards to social media? And, and how do you see it from your realm, on your standpoint of having the social media? And how does, it, does it protect the district? Does it give some guidelines? Because in the code of ethics that we get from NJ SBA, it doesn't really say anything in there in regards to social media or any of that. So, can you, do you mind briefly going over some of that, please?
No, not at all. We did talk briefly about this at the policy committee meeting as well. We do probably have an increasing number of districts that are starting to create these policies, just because, especially now, this past year, more and more people have been on social media, on any type of virtual reality, because of the world we're living in right now, and just the increase in communications. One of the other things we did talk about is when the, when the Code of Ethics was adopted, social media wasn't something that people were contemplating at the time. The ability to post and have this free-thinking, interactive discussion, where you share your opinions and comments at any time, for any reason, just wasn't part of what they were doing. For example, one of the classic cases that they talk about is the letter to the editor case, and they say that, at the time, a school board member wanted to write an opinion to the press, and, or the paper, whatever paper that particular town used, and the only way to do it was to write a letter to the editor, because that's what people used to do. They used to write letters to the editor with an opinion. And at that time, school board said, if you're going to write an opinion piece, you have to make sure you disclose that you are a school board member, but that you are not acting on behalf of the board. And I think what has happened is those letters to the editors, and those opinion pieces have transferred to social media, and we now have this ability to make our opinions at any time, any, on any different type of forum, and the idea would be that this presents these guidelines to remind you that you're not acting on behalf of the board. You're not communicating in a virtual setting that could violate the Urban Public Meetings Act, that you are making sure that you are aware of your professional responsibilities, that when you are making comments and opinions, you're doing so as an individual, and not, and making sure, making sure you're notating that you're doing it not on behalf of the Board of Education. And I think that as a board, one of your major roles is to create policy. So, this policy really does help frame issues for you. If you, as a board, feel like social media is something that is important, and it's something that you, as a board, want to address, that creating a policy is the way to address it. And what we did do, and I do want to bring up, is the policy committee did take a lot of time to look at, okay, school board's policies have some good things here, Strauss Esme has a few good things here, and you really tried to merge them to say, we are not a one-size-fits-all district. We like some of the things here, we like some of the things here, and we wanted to make it right for EHT. And I think you did take a lot of time to really have that discussion. And there could be more edits, and if someone else has opinions...
And there could be more edits, and if someone else has opinions, I think that's great because the more eyes, the better. And ultimately, it will be the Board of Education either approving or disproving this policy in whatever shape it may take. So, I think that's up to you to really create. I hope that helps.
That's exactly what I wanted to do, just as a recap from all of our policy meetings and just to give a different perspective to all the other administrators that maybe were not in our meeting and to the other board members as well, just to give a little bit of oversight of that. Thank you.
Anyone else, Mrs. Sullivan?
Well, then I think that the first sentence in the policy covers it all. We don't need all the other little children things that are put in there. Board members will periodically review the importance of maintaining proper decorum in the online digital world. We want to bring that up at our retreats. We can review it then. We can pick one meeting a month, review it then, but to have somebody monitoring my private pages. I spoke to Mr...I spoke to the whole board actually, and I, when you first brought this up, and I said, I've never seen any of it online. Who...what board member has ever said anything controversial online? Have you ever seen anything? Well, they did. President Castellano told me that I made a post that was inappropriate. My post said, quote unquote, "I cannot wait to see the kids and staff back in our schools." And that was questionable. That was what was brought as the comments. Nobody else had any comment on any board member ever making bad comments on Facebook. I have never seen them. Maybe it's because I keep my friends page, my friends.
You know, so that's out of context.
It's not out of context, that's exactly what I said.
What we were discussing at that particular time was...
Inappropriate comments.
The fact that we should not be discussing ongoing business matters before the board on social media. So, at that particular time, we were debating whether and to what extent we were going to go in person. So, that could certainly be interpreted as leading the debate before it happened here in this room on social media.
You're stretching, you're really stretching.
Well, you know, listen, I didn't choose to bring it up...
What board member would not like to see every child back in our school?
None, that's not the point. You missed the point.
I do miss the point because you are way off base.
You know, the New Jersey School Boards Association offers training on ethics, and I think you need to take some.
I have taken it all. As a matter of fact, I thought tonight I might be honored because I am a certified board member and thank you for that recognition, and I know that you got it.
I got what?
Mike, the notification that that's what I have just achieved.
I have no such notification, but thank you.
Because you're spending all your time on Facebook, and I'm done now, done.
I spent time on Facebook, but thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Bird, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
We have some great things to look forward to.
Yes, we do, and I should also have my friend on there.
And our administrators and teachers and students and staff members are all really excited to be going back to school full-time, and it's been a long year. And let's focus on the positive things that everyone's doing and not on the minutia of what just happened. This policy is not to censor anyone, it's not to out to get anyone, it is just following the lead of many, many districts of what they're doing because as a board, we are only as strong as our weakest member, and if we all hold ourselves to a higher level of accountability, whether in person, whether at a meeting, whether on social media, whether at a sporting event, whether anywhere.
I'm sorry, we don't have order. We need to have order.
We just need to just support each other, that's it. That's what this policy is about. It is about supporting each other, so when we support each other, we're supporting the district. And if we do that, we're doing well for the district. And if we're wasting time on pettiness, that doesn't help kids, and that is why we're here to help kids, policy or not, we're here to help kids. So, can we please focus on the fact that our kids are finally getting to go back to school full-time and they're so excited, and they're so excited to be at a school? I mean, who would have said that a year and a half ago, that our kids are begging to go back? Aren't we so lucky? Can we pop, please? Please just focus on the positive and move in the direction that's good for kids and not on silliness. We've heard that you disagree with this policy, and I appreciate that. Thank you for sharing your opinion, but we will vote as a board, and the majority will be how we move forward for this decision and every decision we make.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd is next.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd was next, and then if we have...try to just keep going in order.
I just want to say that, and I'm still talking, still speaking about the social media policy, but I am going to take a page. I do think that one thing we need to all keep clear is that social media can be a great thing. Let's be clear, social media can be a great thing. It could be used for a positive, posting positive events, it could be about going Facebook Live, and everyone knows I love to go Facebook Live, whether it's macaroni and cheese I'm making, whether it's, you know, whatever it is. So, I had to take another spin at it because I know in different meetings, we had discussions about it, things like the word witch hunt, things like, you know, you know, people always, you know, for us to say that there's no negativity or social media is never used for negativity within our community, I think that we could all say that that would be untrue, right? And it's easy to follow to that. I mean, I've seen adults go back and forth arguing on social media. I've seen my face plastered as the banner on a social media page, and somebody told me, like, you're their profile picture, and I was like, whoa! You know, so I had to take another approach to it because if I didn't, you know, it could drive me crazy. But I'm saying that we need to take to social media and take responsibility as adults. And the question was rather, you know, am I okay with someone monitoring my page or looking at anything on my page? And you know what? I think that people get to, can get to your social media page whether they're your friend or not. I have come to find out that, you know, whether it's, the person's name may not be there, but people know people. Sometimes people can get to you through other people. They may be close friends or family members, and they may not go for you or go after you, but they use other people to maybe go after you and do certain things that could be negative. And you can never prove that, hey, I know it was this person, I know, I know, they personally wouldn't know that unless someone told them. But guess what? You have to just kind of scratch that stuff to the side, use social media for something positive, and for those people who are going to say negative things on social media and use it for negativity, that's on them. That's on them. I don't care whether it's a board member looking at my page and doesn't like something that I say, or whether it's a community member. You're not going to make everyone happy. You can't hide yourself from social media, but you do know that whether you're on there or not, people want to judge what you say and what you do in their own light, and you don't have any control over that. So, I'm just saying, social media can be a positive thing, and I think as a board of education, we need to take control of that and turn it around to something good. Not going to be easy because I think we all agree and we disagree, you know, but I have a statement to make, it comes from me. I don't use other people or fake pages to come at people, and I think that does happen. I know that does happen. So, it is what it is. And I hope y'all do check out my Facebook Live when I do my macaroni and cheese next time, so I'm going to take it as a positive. So, that's it.
Okay, are we ready to move on to policy?
I hope so.
All right. Now, the, just I'll remind everyone, our district calendar for next school year will be on the agenda next week to vote on, so please take a look at that. Before we go to our comments, I have a couple of administrative items that I want to take care of. The first is what I do want, I am aware of, I want to give Lou a minute to give us some New Jersey School Boards highlights, and then he has a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, is it on? I think so. Can you hear me?
You have to eat that one, Lou, that's the one you have to really get close to, sorry.
Now that I'm back at meetings, I get to eat the mic?
I know, I'm sorry.
No food, that's all you get.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. President. The Atlanta County School Boards Association next meeting is planned for May 12th at 7:00 PM. Again, it will be a virtual meeting. Decisions about in-person countywide meetings have not been made. We're looking forward to possibly doing that in the fall. At this meeting, the program has not been fully determined yet. We were in the process yesterday of discussing some program ideas, so I will let you know. I'm sure you will hear from the state when they send out the notice of the meeting regarding the program. But I know one of the items on the program will be voting for officers for the County School Boards Association, and I do not know how the process is going to follow, but I think all of you received the possibility of running. I just want you, all my fellow board members, to know that I will be running again for president, and I certainly will appreciate your support at that meeting, but I believe the voting is going to be held sometime that evening. Mr. Castellano knows how we voted in the past, but I don't know how that's going to happen this year, but that's the schedule, and it's planned for a two-year term. And I know that Henry Goldsmith from Waymouth Township, who is our vice president for legislation, plans to run again. I do not know about the other vice president and her plans yet, I haven't heard, but I thought you would be interested in that. And the other information from the New Jersey School Boards, and you all have, I think, received information, is about the education suposium for the spring that they're having. And the date is again, May 12th and 13th. Mrs. Anaya can register all of us if she would like to, or you can register individually if you go on the site, so that's up to you members. But it sounds like they have quite a program again. They found out that the workshop back in October was so successful that they're trying this for the spring, and they've already planned next year's workshop is going to be virtual again because of the success that they've had in the past. So, that's all I know from the New Jersey School Boards at this time. And it gives me a pleasure and an honor this evening to present our board member, Michael Price, having successfully completed the requirements for Level 1 of the Board Member Academy Program as established by the New Jersey School Boards Association, is hereby awarded the designation of Certified New Board Member. So, congratulations, Mr. Price.
It's a pleasure to participate in the different levels of training that New Jersey School Boards Association offers, and these are programs above the mandated training that we take. So, this is my first one, and I'm going to keep going from here. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
And thank you, and good luck on your...
Very good.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right. That's all at this time, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delbarter. Okay, next item that I have, we've been trying to find a date for a retreat. We wanted to wait till everyone is back and able to attend in person. Remember that Ms. Hauk Elko and Dr. Grucho will be our presenters. So, the date I'd like to propose is May the 14th, that's a Friday, from 6, remember 6 to 8 PM, 8 PM hard stop, Friday, May 14th.
Friday, May 14th, I cannot attend.
Okay.
Unless I can attend virtually, I will not be here.
Okay.
I have reservations.
All right. I don't know that we have any other dates in May. We've been going back and forth, we've been working, working, working on this, so I think we're going to have to let it go for now and maybe try for the summer. Dr. Grucho's away the last week of May. Okay, well, we have the retirement, all right, let me back up here. So, the next thing I was going to talk about was retirement. Does May 21st...
Sunday, Friday, right?
Yes. Okay. All right. So, the idea was to have it in person, so that's what we've been waiting on, because if it's virtual, we're not going to really get the full effect, and then we're going to be, you know, with all the other things that go with it. Okay, all right, so we're just going to put that to the side. We've really tried our best to find a date on that. We've been waiting till everyone's back in person. I don't like Friday nights either. They were the only nights that we could get our presenters, and May and June is just starting to really, really fill up. So, let me skip ahead. We've been asked by the Education Association in lieu of a retirement party, since it's so difficult to get a restaurant and all of that, we've been asked to hold a special meeting whereby we honor retirees from last school year and this school year. So, we've been asked if we would hold a special meeting on May the 20th, and essentially it would be on the grounds here of Alder, whether in this room or outside, to honor the retirees. So, that's a Thursday, that's May the 20th. So, we're going to go ahead and schedule that for everyone that's able to make it. I hope everyone is able to do that. I think that's the right thing to do. And again, we'll look again for possible dates for the retreat in the summer when we're all able to be, you know, together in person. May and June are just really, really filling up. The PSA, Principals and Supervisors Association, have now officially notified us that they're ready to start negotiating, and we have our team in place so that, you know, can go ahead and begin. Ms. Anaya, I'm looking at you and Mr. Price and...
We did receive that letter towards the end of last week, so we will coordinate to get some dates set up, yep.
Good, that's something else we'll need some nights for. The final thing administratively, we're now at a point where everyone is in person. So, I'd like to suggest that in May, we return to normal in-person meetings, not hybrid meetings. They will still be broadcast and simulcast, but they will not be hybrid in terms of having, you know, call-in participation. We'll return to the normal meeting that we have, but of course, visible and accessible broadcast out to the public. How does everyone feel about that? So, next week would be our last hybrid meeting. Now, I know what you're going to ask, can board members still, if we need to down the road, are board members able to call into meetings? Ms. Hauk Elko, the answer is yes, correct?
After the public emergency is over, yes. If it was during the public emergency, we'd have to go back to what we were doing.
Okay, makes sense?
Yeah, so we're following our policy that we recently adopted last couple of meetings ago, and so we'll still have that option if something happens as long as we give a timely justification.
Yeah. All right, everybody good? All right, that's a lot of administrative stuff, well, we haven't met in a while. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Delbarter, you're still not good. Oh, no.
No, I'm still not good. And I do apologize about those two dates because I've done nothing for the longest time, and these are the only two dates I could have done. So, my concern is, first of all, quarantining after travel, if we're fully vaccinated, we don't need to, we can still attend in person? Is that correct?
That's...
Teachers can still have to quarantine, we shouldn't have to either, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, I just wanted to double check.
As long as you follow the guidelines and you're fully vaccinated and you've gone through the two-week year.
Yes.
Yes. And then I just wanted... And then I just wanted to clarify, did you say that people, is it just us that cannot call into a meeting? We're still going to allow the public to call, correct?
For next week. Next week will be the same as this week. But then after that, what I'm proposing to the board is we return to normal, traditional in-person meetings like we've always had.
So my thought is twofold. I mean, we don't have a very big crowd today, but sometimes, sorry, sometimes we do have a crowd, and we do have to maintain spacing. So there are times when people are not going to be able to come in and they want to make comments. So that's one thing. And second of all, as a parent who has kids in multiple sports, sometimes people can't make it here. And I've heard so many comments from people that are so happy that they are able to watch it virtually. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I was at street hockey, watching the meetings on my phone and listening and keeping up to date. I went to every single board meeting during, while we had it broadcast. I was happy I was able to call in. You know, sometimes you just can't make it here because of your schedule. And I like the option that people can call in. I love hearing from the public, and I love hearing from the students, and I think our students are more likely to call in too, instead of standing in front of people, because some of them just feel more comfortable that way. So I'd like to keep it open for people to be able to still call in.
How do board members feel about that? Go ahead, Mrs. Houk.
I just wanted to clarify that that's not something we've done in the past, and we're only doing it right now because of the public health emergency. So I don't want individuals to get the wrong idea that it's something that we're going to be able to continue to use. And, you know, we're back to a normal board. Everybody's here, everybody's in person. You as a board made a decision to take your meetings, to broadcast them, so people can still watch and participate. But I just want to be clear that the phone call-in piece is only for this limited duration. It's not something that will be continuing once the public emergency is over.
Go ahead, Ms. Price.
So that, I understand, the live simulcast will still occur despite emergency or non-emergency? And, right? And then if...
No. No, what we used to do was, we would broadcast the next day, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, because maybe we weren't doing that. Or the day after. That's what we pre-told this. We were taping the meetings, and then they were going on television and our website. I just want to make sure that I'm clear. And I'm looking administratively, because I'm not sure if that's accurate.
There's nothing that prevents us from a simulcasting. What we would be backing away from is the call-in participation. That will end when the emergency ends anyway. We wouldn't be permitted to do that. So we're just proposing going back to the in-person meeting, fully in-person in May, like we always used to meet. Right?
So we'll be fully in-person. If people want to make comments, they can come to the podium. We will still be live streaming if that's what we decide to do. But I do agree with Ms. Delbarca that the ease of attending is, you know, facilitated by the way we've been doing it for some families. So if we prohibit the phone calls from coming in during our meetings at that point, can we still have, like, an open email where if questions do come in and they're not here to ask them, they can still email the questions and we can answer them at the following meeting?
I think we would have the Contact Us tab on the website.
Okay.
I think we'd encourage that.
If I can just add to that, two parts. One, this to Ms. Delbarca's point of overflow. We did have an overflow process in person. We were still, if there were a bigger meeting, we would be able to accommodate the people in person. And I don't want to speak for, on behalf of the board who receives these emails, but 90% of the email comments are addressed administratively anyway, which is the quickest way to resolve a matter. There is the Contact Us page on the website, which we can continue to use if there is a board-related matter. So there is still a way to get to the board, to get things resolved or to be heard. So it's not going away. We still have an open door, if you will.
So that's perfect, because if someone cannot make the meeting, they still have the ability to reach out and have any questions that may arise from them watching it at a sporting event. You know, a question might come up, and so they still have the ability to seek out answers and, you know, participate.
So...
I'm confused about that. Kristi, you're saying somebody's sitting and watching baseball, and they're watching the meeting. If they send in an email right then, it's not going to be addressed then?
No. Yeah, I was just saying that they...
Because that would address it right away.
Right, right.
I think that that might get sticky. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
It might just get sticky.
You wouldn't be able to...
Being able to get that and then...
You wouldn't be able to do, to live cast emails because of delay and the idea that you have to have a dedicated timeframe. Like, for example, right now, we have a timeframe cutoff just to make sure we get them. So I think what Mrs. Bird is saying is that when we go ahead and do it, we have the communication button, so if there is a question, anyone can use that. And they could have used it in the past, too, to communicate that way. And then it will be either handled administratively or brought to the board, depending on what the issue was and who it needed to go to. I believe is what you were saying.
Yeah. Just that there's still a component that, rather than calling, there's still a way to contact.
Okay. Are we, are we good?
But then you can choose to move forward, and then if it's not working, you can always change it.
Well, yeah, we'll finalize it next week. I just didn't want to make a sudden change, but I would, you know, at least it was my intention for us to simply return to live in-person meetings as we always had to. Fully broadcast, televised, you know. So we'll finalize that next week. All right, that's all I have, and we're ready for public comment. We'll just quickly go ahead and start up. If you want to do the written ones first, as these are coming in.
Sure. Let's do public comment emails, if you will. So there's one person who sent two emails, but in light of the fact that they're both emails, we will still can just go through the emails, if that's okay.
Sure.
So, first one. Katie Coggins, 103 Seaside, E H ten. I would like to know why Board Member Patrick Ireland is consistently referred to as Patrick instead of Mr. Ireland during board meetings. Every other board member is respectfully called by their last name except him. I have noted in every meeting since he has been voted in, the president and other board members regularly refer to him as his first name when all the board members are referred to by their last names. There never seems to be a mistake with anyone but Mr. Ireland. Is this because he is new? Ms. Terri Delbarca is also new, so why haven't there been mistakes with calling her by first name? I ask the president and other board members to review previous meetings to see what I have seen and move forward with giving the respect to Mr. Ireland that he deserves. Thank you.
Okay, so I appreciate that comment very much, and I think that's something I want to talk about at our retreat. I don't think there's a need for a total formality. I think we all, from time to time, refer to each other by first name. I call Dr. Grucho. Sometimes I will call her Kim. Sometimes I will call her Doc. And this is teamwork. Tonight was a work meeting. We did a lot of work. But I think we ought to discuss it, you know, as a board at our next offsite, and however we decide as a board that we want to function and, you know, conduct business, we'll certainly adopt, you know, we can make modifications to our norm. But, you know, to my recollection, all of us, from time to time, will use first names. You're all welcome to call me by my first name if you'd like, and we'll go from there. Go ahead. We usually, well, yeah, we'll wait till board member comment.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, next public comment. Katie Coggins, 103 Seaside. To follow up on my previous question and comment, I have included screenshots from the Ann Arbor Township School website, which does not reflect Mr. Ireland, Mrs. Salagi, or Mr. Price as board members. And another page where Mr. Ireland is referred to as Patrick Ireland instead of Mr. Patrick Ireland, just like every other board member. Why does this seem to be a consistent issue verbally and in print? And if we can respond to this administratively, I know Dr. Grucho had a phone call she had to take, but I can respond. The website, if you are on your telephone, cuts off three people. If you turn it the other way, portrait, yep, Mr. Price is demonstrating for me, thank you very much, it does actually show all nine members. Mr. Patrick, Mr. Ireland's picture was taken for his identification purposes by himself during COVID, and we did not want to put his selfie on the website. He did get a professional picture taken, and it will be updated shortly. Regarding the other members, it was just the way he was viewed on the actual camera or on the actual film. So I do have one more comment. If you want me to go ahead and work on that. This one, I know Dr. Grucho did have a response. I'll hopefully defer to our team to kind of chip in so we can get this resolved. This is from Mary Beth Cialini. It might be Chiellini. I'm not really sure how to pronounce that. 18 Barlett Boulevard. Thank you all for your hard work in getting our students back to in-person classes. I have two questions. One, what is the reason for the Mondays being all virtual? Two, if high school sports and clubs can meet in person, why can't the other clubs meet as well, following CDC guidelines? The Interact Club could have made peanut butter and jelly sandwiches for homeless together as a group while maintaining social distance, I'm sure. Instead, the students in the club participated in this honorable community outreach alone at home. Seems to defeat the purpose of the club. Please put our academic clubs on the priority list along with sports and band, and not all students get the social, emotional interaction from sports or band. Now, we did talk about this as a team. I'll start, and Mr. Santilli, or do you want to do it? Go ahead.
That's fine. So there's a couple of things. I know this question probably, since we haven't met, came in prior to our release of the transition to five days a week, so I think we're pleased to certainly report that Mondays, starting the week of 4/26, certainly would not be all virtual. So hopefully that answers that question. In addition, you know, we did have discussion about clubs. We're continuing to explore all those things. There's a lot, as you can imagine, that goes into those decisions. So for instance, with the secondary level staying abbreviated at this time, you know, there is small group instruction that occurs in the afternoon, would require students then to go home and then come back. Typically, we would have an earlier bus, while sports, for instance, has like a 5:00 run. So there are some compiling factors, let's say, that certainly present a challenge in being able to accommodate every single club activity or extracurricular activity. So it's not just a transportation issue, it's a compiled issue in regards to the current schedule of running as well as that. So we continue to explore, and, you know, we are trying to certainly find ways to accommodate all of our students in as many activities as possible. So we will continue to do that as we have promised.
Thank you, Mr. Santilli. And if you can go ahead and put up the public comment telephone number, that concludes the email public comment. The internet stream is about a minute, a little over a minute behind, so while we wait for that to happen and get some calls in, I will just say, we did not use a timer for this past email public comment because they were short. If they are lengthy, we do the timer to make sure we don't exceed the three minutes. So it's not favoritism or anything, it was just a matter of the timeliness. So I just want to put that out there, to be fair. Okay? We will now take online for calls. the awards for the Union Retirement, is it going to be an advertised formal meeting, special meeting, or is it going to be board members in attendance like it would have been for a normal retirement?
The way it was presented to me was we would do it as a special meeting.
I thought so. I just want to confirm that was going to be the case. I will go ahead and advertise as such.
So sort of, and the presentation would be somewhat like Teacher of the Year?
Okay. Thank you.
Not a, you know, but I mean, that's subject to change, but I think we're safe advertising.
Thank you. It's now hit the website. I mean, the stream has now had a phone number, so we'll give it a few seconds to see, or a minute, to see if anybody calls in. Thank you.
Dr. Grucho had a family emergency to tend to, so I excused her for the evening, so we wish her well.
The phone number has been up for about a minute. We have only had about 50 participants online this evening. Usually it's in the hundreds, so there may actually be no public comments tonight.
Our ratings are dropping, guys. I don't know. We got to step it up. I don't know what's going on. All right, we'll just, we'll go ahead and move to board member comment then, before we adjourn any board member further comment.
I just wanted to say, I was, I thought, what I was talking to one of my board members during the wait for the phone break, and I just, and I just had, and I asked, I said, you know, do you feel, I was asking, Mr. Allen, does he feel that way? Because I'm a very miss or missus type person. Sometimes I find myself calling somebody by their first name all the time, and I had to kind of get used to saying first names. It's Mr. Delbarca, he always says, when are you going to ever call me Lou? And I said, probably never, because I'm a principal, you know. So in this, I think it's just a preference, but I guess my point was just that, did you feel that way? Or did you feel like you were the only person that was called by first name? Because I know sometimes we do call just by first names unintentionally. I'm not sure. So we just, it's not because you're new. I mean, just to give you a feel for it, because I don't know if that's how you feel.
So Mr. Castellano and I spoke earlier before the meeting and stuff about that, and we'll just go into more discussion during our board retreat, which I think is a little bit more appropriate for that. But it does bring light to what we should have as our board norms and in live session compared to maybe executive session or committee meetings or however, comma, but it's, I think it would be appropriate at our board retreat, and we discussed that.
Did all of us call each other? Okay. I was just wondering, because I was like, that was weird, not weird, but it was just a different type of question or notice, I guess. And, yeah, and I just didn't know if, and I know we'll talk about it later, but are we going to also have, is that going to be that people, when they come up to the microphone, if they have to address a board member, do they have to say the last name, first or, you know, first name, last name, or Mr. and Mrs. as well?
They would just...
Yeah.
Right? Aren't they only addressing the person when they address?
Public comments only.
Right, public comment, right. Should be here.
If someone's making a comment in their public comment and mentions a board member's name, it's a public comment, and if their opinion really can't tell them...
You can't tell them how to say their, right.
Please don't say just any, please say Mrs. Uncle, that type of thing.
Okay. Yeah, I've had that happen to me before. I did correct someone and said my name, because they called me, to me, Graham Floyd, and I just said... because they called me Tamisha Graham Floyd, and I just said, it's Tamika Gilbert Floyd. So that situation, those types of things may come up, you know, so, okay, it's no problem.
I call Mr. Delbarca Lou all the time at meetings. We've known each other a long time, we're working together, you know, it's.
But I think that's a good idea to have the discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Tamika, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd. And the policy, I mean, that policy in the retreat.
As part of a norm, whatever the board's pleasure is, is fine with me, Mrs. Burden.
Thank you, two quick things. One is a parent, like I'm putting my parent hat on at a board meeting, but not to brag, but my kids are participating in credit completion on Saturdays at the high school. So, yeah, so when I take them, it's awesome, and I'm so thankful to the administration for setting that up. Hopefully we pass, but anyway, sorry. So I went to pick up my one daughter earlier than the credit completion time was over, and I couldn't get in, I, no one answered the door, so my daughter missed an appointment. So I feel like if we have students in the buildings all weekends for things like credit completion, and we're paying, like, staff, and we're paying probably a security guard, could we have someone by the door if a parent comes and needs to get to their children? Because things do come up, so that was, so that's just my parent, kind of, I noticed this.
No, that's fine, thank you for bringing that up and bringing it to our attention. While I'm pleased to hear that you couldn't get in, I also am saddened that you missed the appointment.
I punched out a window, though, so I circumvented it, but, no.
So, no, but I think it's a good point, and thank you for bringing it up. I'll certainly, you know, take a look at it and make sure we have things in place that make sure that there are protocols to address those needs that arise, absolutely.
And then secondly, I just wanted to say thank you to administration, because you guys have worked hard all day, all week, and you are doing really great things to get our kids back in school and having to sit through a board meeting tonight, like, when some of the things that we had to discuss were silly, but thank you for all your hard work you do for our kids. So I wanted to say that, we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Delbarca and Mrs. Salagi.
I would like to thank the administration, too, and the IT department for all the technical work that they did so that I could attend the meetings virtually, and how much I appreciated that. And I'm sure it wasn't just me there, I bet other members also. But I tremendously appreciated that opportunity to be part of our board that I want to serve, totally. And I want, I'm very happy to be back in person, and I want to thank all of you for the warm welcome that I received this evening, and look forward to continuing being here and doing all the work we're supposed to do, working together for the kids. Thank you.
Mrs. Salagi.
It has been mentioned a couple times, working as a team here, and nobody does more homework than I do. But to be called silly twice, not just once, but again at the end, this silly business that we had to attend to discourages board members from giving their opinions. And I don't mean to put you down, but twice silly was used pertaining to me, and I do not appreciate it. Again, I'm so happy everybody's back, going to be back in school full-time. Again, the administration has put in hours and hours and hours, and we appreciate every minute that you have spent. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? Ms. Elabar.
Well, the arts are alive in E H T. I was lucky that I was able to go and watch Les Misérables. The cast did a wonderful job, as well as the advisors putting that together. And, I mean, some of these students, I can't say that they're not kids anymore, some of these high school students I've known since they were quite young, and it was very exciting getting to see them perform and use their talent and just shine. And it was, it was wonderful, and I'm also sad I missed the drum line. I have to make sure we get invited again to it, because it was actually very exciting to watch that. I also am so happy to see the sports, you know, middle school sports are starting, high school sports are underway, and I have some great news to share, because it's not high school sports, however, three of our high school female students tried out, and they made a U-16 New Jersey ball hockey team, and it's with the USA ball team. So they are, three students from our high school are representing New Jersey for all of the United States, or they're playing in a few different locations, and they may, because the U-16 is a new age group, they may have the opportunity to travel overseas. So I want to say congratulations to them. It's exciting, it's all the same stuff, and all of this comes down to making sure our students have social and emotional well-being, and sports, and the arts, and community helping. Big things have been happening with our Girl Scouts in Acreford Township. They've been continuing to do community service, they're being safe, they're following guidelines, but they're still doing things such as making cat houses. They've been working on the need to reserve, beautifying it for, and it's just not my troop, it's other troops, too, that have been working so hard to make Acreford Township the best they can. And all of this really helps our students, because they are all students in our schools. And I also wrote down a few notes tonight, and I want to mention, you guys know I have a few little sayings, but knowledge is power. So I've been teaching ESL for a long time, probably about 17 years, you know, but if we found someone who could tell me, you know, their viewpoints and how they think that ESL students acquire language, then I'd always be willing to listen, and that's why, you know, anytime that we can bring people in to give us more knowledge to help our students, I think that's awesome. The other thing I want to say, our voices are meant to be heard. We all have our opinions, and our opinion is our truth, our perception is our truth. And I say that all the time, because there's not a statement that is more true in the world. So we all have to be very cognizant as how we're talking to other people, and make sure that everybody's feelings are heard. And it could be board level, it also is the community, you know. I've seen a lot of things on Facebook, and I, I turn off Facebook a lot now. But, you know, it's, we got to try to keep as much as we can positive, and that's just what we need in our world nowadays. So, you know, let's just try to be more sympathetic to everybody, and do what we're here to do, you know, make this the best place we can for the students. Because I don't think anyone else is giving up three and a half of their, three and a half of their hours to fight with each other, you know. Let's just focus on what we need to do. We want, we want to make sure that this place is, it's safe for our students. It is a place where they can learn, no matter if they have a learning disability or they're English language proficient, or if they have any kind of need, or if they're a general ed student, or an honor student. We just want to make these schools the best possible time. Like, I tell my oldest that, you know, I understand this isn't a normal year, and it kind of stinks that it's their first year in high school, and you're not getting that experience, because high school should be like the best time of your life. You're making friends, you're socializing, you're playing sports, you're meeting new people, you're doing all sorts of things that you should be doing. You're playing hockey in all sorts of states. It should be your best time ever, and, you know, I said, don't, don't look at this time period as, okay, this really stinks. You know what, it's a learning experience, because we don't know what life is going to throw at us. And we just have to learn to kind of go with the flow and make the best of the situations that we can, and and when it comes down to it, it's just being nice to each other, and, you know, I had a nice I E P discussion the other day at my son's I E P meeting, and I'm not going to share any personal details, but, you know, I told them, because everyone said, you know, oh, your son, he makes me laugh, he's funny, he's the great kid, and I'm like, well, you know what, that's because I teach him that. I said, you know what, if you're going to have a bad day, come home and have your bad day at home. But when you're at school, you know what, your teachers are there to teach you, your O T teacher, you don't need to take anything out on them. You know, if you have a frustrating day, come home, you know, bring it out on mom. I mean, it doesn't, but. What I'm trying to say is just trying to bring out the positivity and trying to make other people feel good and have good days is really, really important. And I can't stress enough that we don't know what's going on in people's lives. We don't, you know, we, we have to just stay more positive, stay focused, and do what we're here to do, and make this the best place for our students and, you know, our staff, because if our staff isn't happy, our students won't be happy either. Thank you.
And I would like to make your onion cheese, please.
Any other board members before we adjourn?
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, this week, it's National Student Leadership Week, so that's throughout the nation and New Jersey. So I just wanted to say thank you to our, our student leaders that are out there. They may not have the title, but going through this whole year, they stepped up and out of their realm and out of their comfort zone to be leaders. So they may not have that role, so thank you to all of our students out there. I also wanted to ask and get ahead of it possibly, if we could do possibly like a board resolution or something for talking to Governor Murphy or whatever, to our elected officials, to open up possibly more participation for graduation. I don't know if that's happening at the, at the administration level, but if we can open that up, if we could write that board resolution, I'm sure many of our board members will support that. And just talking to elected officials, if we could do it for political meetings or whatever, and there's no cap for that, we should be able to do it for our students, give back a little bit to our students and for their social awareness, and I just believe maybe, Mr. Castellano, we can entertain that sooner than later, because it's coming up very shortly. I think that would be a great idea. And I just wanted to say thank you to the administration as well. This Monday coming up, I have, I'm going to be touring the schools. As a new board member, typically you do it after your board meeting, but due to COVID, it did not happen. But I appreciate every single meeting it's been talked about, so I appreciate the, our administration going through that level on booking and going through that. So I'll meet, a couple other board members are going to come with us on Monday, so I just want to say thank you for your hard work on that, and organizing that as well. So that's it, thank you, have a good night.
That's an excellent idea, so I'm going to task Mrs. Burden and Mr. Ireland to draft a resolution for next Tuesday, and we'll, we'll get it on the agenda. Mr. Price.
Okay, I'll keep it brief, a lot of great comments. I'm just very happy, like everybody is, that we're all here together tonight. And like, like Mr. Delbarca said, it felt a little strange coming back in, didn't it?
Yes, big time.
Yeah, but it's, um.
But we got right back into it.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's nice that we're all back together again, and hopefully we'll be able to stay back together again. You never know with these numbers, I mean, so, but we just hope and that is where people get vaccinated, and that the proper social distancing and so on and so forth, we can keep it, going in the right direction that it is. So that's all, I'll keep it brief, again, good night, everybody, and thank you for coming out.
Any other, Mrs. Salagi?
Speaking of social distancing, are we at three feet, the elbow? Could we all sit up here next meeting? It's our meeting, we can decide, and I believe it's three feet, elbow to elbow, we should be apart.
I'll defer to, I'll defer to Kim, and we'll see how, what board members are comfortable. I mean, you know, this is, these are Kim's building, so if that's all right with her, then we'll go from there.
Or perhaps we get, borrow a few of the shields.
Go ahead, Mrs. Gilbert.
I don't have a comment about where we sit, I'll save that for later. I just wanted to say, real quick, I just wanted to thank my children's teachers. All the teachers in the district, thank you all, but I'm just speaking personally, all the emails, me emailing them all the time and making sure they were on when they were remote, and I even had to call one of the teachers and say, could you please tell my daughter to go make sure, I can't get to her, and he's not answering the phone, could you please, could you have my daughter go check on her brother? And I know you're like really discouraged, but that was the situation. It was a unique year, and she, she helped me out. So I'm just saying, when my son goes to Miller, he has Miss Gross and Miss Nod, and my daughter goes to Fernwood, and she has, she has multiple teachers, but one of her, two of her main teachers are Miss Vanderburg and Miss, Miss Fessman. And in her, in her, I think it's Southern. Our children are in the same class, but I just want to thank them, because they have really, they've gone above and beyond the call of duty to assist the children. So I just wanted, if you get a chance to say thank you.
I second that.
And we didn't plan, because I just found, I didn't realize they were in the same class.
Anyone else? Okay, that was a long meeting, but a lot of good work was done. April will be very busy. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
Second. Hands, all right, everyone have a very good evening.
Thank you, you too.